Lord, just thank you for today. Help us with the meeting tonight, Lord, help us to get through it in a timely manner that make the decisions that are best. Be able for everybody to have input and discussion. And that we come up with the best outcomes. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? Last meeting? And if so, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I can motion approve.
David?
I'll second.
Ronnie? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion approved. So motion to pay the bills.
I like the motion.
Delmar?
All second.
Dot. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Good deal. All right. Let's have a discussion. Dan's got a spot on here. We have a application for building permit for Dyna Farm and Home. They want to build a thirty by fifty building west of the current farm and home. And that would be for display in storage use.
I make motion.
Okay.
Well, second.
Dave and Rick? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we need to but next remark is do we need to get a director and an alternate for the Clarence Cannon Water District or?
Yes, I contacted them and they said it needs to be both the board who's to be the representative and the alternate. And I know you talked before about having the city employees because Rick can't make it.
Yeah.
To have like Michael and Mike. One be the alternate, one be the voting.
Okay.
Member. And so that's what we need is.
Can we vote on both at the same time?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So anybody got any thoughts on that? Maybe make Michael Mike write the voting member and Michael Robbins as the alternate for Clarence Cannon Water District?
That'd be fine. If they still got the rubber going.
David make make motion? Delmar?
And Delmar.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think it's important that we have somebody down there. Does that allow you to water? All right, Mr. Aronson, if you want to come up to the podium? For is yours?
Good afternoon, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Dan Aronson. I have worked in the IT industry for the last ten years and I'm here today to bring to your attention a technology that is becoming more widespread and as a, I'm sorry, has become more widespread and has serious privacy implications, not just for yourself, but for anyone. Flock Safety, also known as Flock, is a company that produces AI license plate reader, license plate reader, or LPR camera systems. The company specializes in standalone solar powered cameras that can be pole mounted anywhere that has exposure to the sun and a good cellular connection. Collect footage and license plates and sell that information to police agencies to, in theory, reduce drug and car theft crime. Founded in twenty seventeen, they are now worth almost eight billion dollars and have over eighty thousand cameras across all over our fifty states. With their newly founded popularity comes the inevitable questions. How good is their security? Do they have respect for your privacy? How many mistakes do the cameras make? And how much do they and how much do they help solve crime? Let's break down each one. Security. Flock must be one of the worst companies I have ever seen in terms of security practices. In November of this year, after eight years of operating, GainSec, an independent group of IT security researchers, decided to examine Flock's security camera cameras and consequently their system as a whole. They found over fifty vulnerabilities in the Flock, in Flock cameras, over twenty of which were marked as critical vulnerabilities. And that doesn't even include the long outdated Android eight operating system that these cameras run on that alone has almost four hundred security vulnerabilities. I'll keep this short, but I think it prudent to include a few examples of their security blunders. One, Flock does not require police agencies to enable MFA or multi-factor authentication to use the Flock system. This has led to leaked credentials being sold on the dark web. Two, pressing the power button on the back of the camera in the right sequence would enable a password free Wi-Fi hotspot generated by the camera that would allow anybody to enter, monitor, modify, or remote control any part of the camera. And three, despite Flock's own misleading marketing information, absolutely nothing on these devices is encrypted. GainSec did not have to break any encryption to generate their report. Privacy. I think it's pretty obvious that Flock does not care about privacy despite what they say on their website. Their job is to track you and your movements and sell that information to police as for profit. It makes zero sense for them to say that they care about you and your privacy when they frequently purchase data broker information on everyday people like you and me. They also nearly purchased dark web data that would include any information that has been hacked from companies holding your very sensitive personal information. Thankfully, public backlash put a stop to that, as far as we know. Accuracy. You could describe the Flock system as ChatGPT slapped on a security camera system. I don't know if any of you have used something like ChatGPT before, but I think we all know by now that they're that they are anything but accurate. Studies studies have shown Flock camera misreads ten to thirty-five percent of plates affected by low light, speed, and weather. IPVM reported roughly ten percent of states are misread. Law enforcement agencies, IACP, the NIJ, and ASDM cap the acceptable error rate at roughly five percent. So Flock falls well beyond the tolerated range. These accuracies have affected real people. Each false read wastes officers' time, erodes community trust, and exposes municipalities to costly civil rights lawsuits. A few examples include Toledo, Ohio, April of twenty twenty-four. A Flock camera misread triggered a traffic stop that escalated into a canine mulling of a driver. Espanola, New Mexico, September of twenty twenty-three. The system misreaded two as a seven, leading officers to cut two sisters at gunpoint. Colorado, September of twenty twenty-five. A Columbine Valley officer accused a woman in Denver of theft after a Flock camera incorrectly flagged her vehicle. She then had to prove her own innocence before the summons was voided. Effectiveness. The Oakland Police Department has reported only one hundred and eighty-two arrests in his first year of using ALPRs, which only accounted for one point four percent of homicides, robberies, burglaries, and firearm assaults during that time period. The Northern California Regional Intelligence Center estimates only one to two vehicles out of every one thousand triggers an alert. A hit rate of point roughly point one to point two percent. In other words, the technology generates very few tangible results. Studies from larger jurisdictions have shown that LPR alerts increase officer workload without a corresponding rise in solved crimes. Every time an alert flashes on an officer's screen, time is spent verifying the plate, cross-checking databases, and documenting the interaction, which pulls officers away from patrol duties and community engagement and proactive problem solving. The net effect is not a force multiplier, but a distraction that consumes valuable manpower and erodes efficacy. In conclusion, US lawmakers, specifically Senator Ron Wyden and Representative Raja Krishnamurti, Krishnamurti, have called on the Federal Trade Commission to investigate Flock over significant cybersecurity concerns. Public awareness of the Flock network is growing at a staggering rate. The community already has tools to see exactly where these cameras are located. The open source map at Dflock.me crowdsources the locations of every known Flock camera, allowing any resident to view camera locations on a citywide map, report new installations, and plan routes that avoid these sensors. This alone shows that many citizens are uncomfortable with permanent citywide surveillance surveillance systems. In addition to this map, multiple cities have rejected or terminated Flock contracts after encountering privacy concerns and disappointing effectiveness. Many of the people I have spoken with on this issue have told me this will never happen around here, or that's a big city issue. It's saddened me to have to tell them that not only did Kirksville consider consider installing this very system in the city, but has already, but it has already been approved. If you wish to drive to any larger city, chances are that you will not only find that find these cameras, but you will have no choice but to pass them in order to enter the city. I am here today to urge this council to be very cautious while considering the adoption of new technologies, especially when those technologies enable mass surveillance and spread the word and spread the word on these companies that very clearly do not care about your privacy and security. If any of you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Daniel. So Kirksville did approve the use of them?
They did, yes.
I knew they were looking at it.
I think they've gotten funding for it.
Yeah, didn't they? They got a grant for it, didn't they?
A fifty thousand dollar grant, yes.
Yeah. And so then now they've got to put it in if they got the grant for it.
And and though that has never been discussed here by this board.
No, we've, um, but thank you for.
Yeah.
It's
Yes.
I know Edine or Knox County alone hasn't had anything as far as I'm aware, but this is more cautionary.
Yes.
To spread this information around.
Yeah.
I'm glad to know it because I did not realize the, all I remember is Quincy caught, they said they caught somebody by using it. And so I was thinking, oh, this is good, but no, I'm glad you pointed it out. I was wrong.
Okay. Peggy?
And thank you. That was excellent. Okay. Monthly statements look good. Do you have any questions on those? And if not, I would have sent out the budget amendments. So we have a total of four thousand ninety-seven dollars in the general fund, five thousand nine seventy-three in the street fund, water and sewer, nine thousand three sixty-nine, and sanitation. The biggest part of that is the landfill, as you're saving, gone up, so, and they're going up again in February, so, eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-three.
So we need to motion to amend the budget, the amounts that you presented?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to amend the budget and the amounts that Peggy has presented?
I'll make the motion.
Wait a second.
So any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And I have one other thing that I just want to thank Margaret.
I was getting up to see what you were gonna say.
I just want to say thank you for everything you do.
Absolutely.
You're just amazing. You really are. You have more knowledge of the city than anybody does. You do an excellent job and I think that is shown in the city audits year after year after year.
Yes.
The only finding we have is.
We need one more office person.
We need one more office person. And so, well done, and we appreciate you.
Thank you.
And Kathy, she does her job with excellence also.
I appreciate all three of you because I could not do this job without you three girls.
Okay.
All right. Roger, is it easier for you to stand or sit?
Sit.
Okay.
A while.
Okay. Whatever you need to do.
There's two up in there. Do you have enough? I'll give one to Margaret if not.
Yeah.
Yep.
So here's the roads I've done.
Wow.
Uh, it's ones in purple and ones in orange is what I've got to do. Probably three quarters of them will get it next year. So that'd be that'd be ninety-five percent of your all the roads, so, our roads, so.
Good deal.
Yeah.
Well, they look great.
Yeah.
You've done a really good job with the snow removal.
Thank you.
Yes.
In past years, there's been side streets that I wouldn't go on and I I find myself, oh, I can go down that, that's fine.
Yeah, and a couple of days after the snow, they're all clear.
Yeah, it was beautiful. It's wonderful.
Done this for quite a while, still kind of new, we're coming in how to do it, so, yeah, they done a real good job. They go at it pretty fast and hard.
So they're probably done with the fiber this year?
No, no.
I mean, they're not gonna put anymore in this year.
I doubt that, well, you don't see them tomorrow.
Really?
Forty-eight. Yeah, they'll they'll start it up again. I hope they don't hit the water line.
Well, it only took them three hours to get the water back on, so that's pretty good.
Pretty fast.
Yeah.
I can never stay around beside them and when they hit it, we they go to work, so it's working pretty good. They won't hit three, that's not bad.
No, it sounds like your new water line mapping system on their computer is pretty accurate.
Yep.
That's good.
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody got any questions for Roger?
Everything looks good.
We've done the snow pretty good. We've worked on the place fast and hard. Or a certain time they hit it and be done with it, and we hit it right, so.
Yeah. Yeah, it was, it looked really good. Looked really good.
Get out there, wherever that goes around, it makes a big difference. Picking it down. Makes a big difference. That's all I have.
Peggy, did you have something?
So what are you thinking of in the rate for Matt?
I
You're talking about putting on full time and place some time?
I thought I'd bring it up to you guys and see what you're thinking.
Okay, so he's to replace Ty, is is that what you're thinking?
I don't know how we're gonna do this yet. Probably, yes, I would say as much as he can.
Okay.
But he's ninety percent of the time he's on the trash truck, so that's keeps him busy.
Okay. What's he getting now?
Seventeen is what he's at now.
Yep.
What if we take full time?
Uh, we were changing them to money.
Okay.
Which Michael has his license, so. His water licenses.
We can So you're thinking of.
Yeah, so, what are you thinking? He's got his CDL.
Yeah, he's got everything that way.
Yeah, he takes care of all the trash.
Yeah.
Mindy does a great job of it.
So is he gonna, he'll be your main sanitation?
Yes.
So we need a motion to move Matt to full time?
Well, some of this is
Of course, that's kind of his decision, isn't it?
Some of this is gonna affect budget, which
Yeah, it will.
They'll be looking at it later.
We'll wait until like January or so, we can do that, that's not, that's, we're good to do that. I talked to him about it, we're good.
Okay, by then you'll kind of know which direction we can do it.
I think that would be best.
Make sure
Yeah.
We'll do that in January.
Yeah, that that'll work.
Good. All right, Peggy.
Anything else?
I think we're good.
Okay.
You have a good Christmas.
I will. All right, Roger. Yes. You bet.
All right. Well, I thought I had all good news on the demo grant, but it sounds like it's kind of Roberts Roloff did get awarded the asbestos inspection.
Did they get the inspection done?
Well, we haven't quite got that. The procurement waiver for the demolition inspection, that's kind of getting held up between the Ryan, who's gonna be gone for a while, so now they've got this Kim looking at it to get that moved along so we can not only get the asbestos inspection done, but the demolition specs inspected too. Chris is asking if we can go ahead, he's asking the powers that be if we could at least go ahead and get started with the asbestos inspection while we're waiting for the other part to get approved. And he's working on the historian, the historical part of it, trying to get that all done. I thought we had two people that could do it, but they don't have enough experience or the right qualifications, but they were excited to get to do something for it, but. Um, and he's working on proposals to get the clear title search. Because we have to have a title company to go through and make sure that there's no leaves on any of those properties. Even though they signed a waiver that said there wasn't, they have, we have to have it in writing, so. It is moving slowly.
Another year.
By spring, we'll be able to do something. Um, and this we can discuss, and Christmas falls on Thursday. Do we want to give the city crew the day after off with pay too?
Yes.
At Thanksgiving, we hadn't discussed it, so I told them they could use a sick day or vacation day if they wanted to take the Friday after Thanksgiving off. Do we want to give them, since it is on a Thursday, include that as part of their holiday?
Only thanks to now.
Well, yeah, if it's snowing, we we got nothing around that, but.
All bets are off for this thing. Right.
So is there, does it need a vote? Would it about to have a vote?
No, you can, you can decree that the day after, I mean, this is just this particular year that that falls that way that Christmas is.
I decree that the city boys can have December twenty-sixth off with pay as part of their holiday.
Yes.
Depending on what?
Depending on the what?
You agree to that, Robert?
And well, I'll pray for no snow.
Thank you.
I pray it will be.
No.
Praying for no snow.
Yes, we don't want any snow on Christmas.
We're looking at increased rates. And that's on there also.
But then they'll be back on that Monday.
Yes, they will.
For that white price that Monday, so that'd be fine for me.
Yeah, so, all righty.
Sounds good.
I don't have, that's about all I got for right now. Um, you guys have anything you want to discuss?
Uh, the country club, are we ready to do some work on it to start on getting some bids maybe for redoing?
At least, at least get a couple bids.
Yeah, I talked to a couple guys and.
Say this is how much we've got, what can we get done?
Yeah.
We gotta start somewhere.
But I got a couple guys who want to look at it and give me some idea what they're thinking it might cost.
I think me and Rick was talking, we only need one furnace going down there if they're working in there.
Yeah.
So gotta have that checked out.
How much do we have set aside for that?
We have forty-five thousand in this year's budget.
And how far do we want to go on, do we need to get the place and insulate it? I don't know if it even has an insulation. I think if we're gonna heat it.
I've been told that there is no insulation in there.
Well, I think we need to to get it then and.
I'll let you know tomorrow, we're going to find out if it's got insulation in it.
And did Michael was gonna do us a three D rendering on the computer of what it could look like?
Yes, he's not finished it.
Could you think he could have it?
There definitely is no insulation up above, I don't think.
I don't think there is either, David.
Maybe January meeting if he could, even if it's not perfected, just kind of a.
Okay.
But if we could have something to give to contractors who are interested
Yeah, I just want to know what we're getting into, yes.
On the same thing.
Okay, yes.
I know when Roger and I went out there, we talked about you tearing the bar out. The kitchen would have just cabinets and cabinets with lots of plugins. So they'd need lots of circuits. And the bathrooms upstairs and downstairs, if we decide to do it, would all have to be remodeled to be handicap accessible.
Yeah. The kitchen don't have to be as dry as it, just some white, white waterboard.
Something you can clean up.
Something you could clean up and and maybe put, you know, a couple of refrigerators in there, a refrigerator and warming stuff for banquets and weddings and stuff like that.
Plug in roasters and crock pods and.
That's a little ways down the road.
We can add to it after we.
I would say getting it and fixing those bathrooms would probably take about the forty-five thousand.
Well, I was just thinking if they had it insulated, if we're gonna heat it all time, it'll pay for itself and.
Oh, yeah.
Of course, the bar and all the coolers will have to go.
Yeah, all that, you've got to take it all out, you don't need a bar.
Get the upstairs going, then worry about the downstairs.
No, why, do we?
No.
No, that's just a liability.
Yeah.
Yes, I would think.
We're on it.
But if it could be bid in sections so that we could see
Well, I talked to one guy.
And this is what the bathroom should take, and this is what.
If we can pay for the materials, and then he's gonna figure out what the guys will figure out what they can have two separate blades out to.
Would you two or be able to kind of like categorize like phase one, phase two? And get it maybe to Margaret or Kathy so they could get something up on the city letterhead and we can bid it out?
Yeah, I just.
We gotta get started on something.
Yeah, get an idea of what it's gonna cost.
Yeah. Yeah, quit kicking that can down the road.
It's just the hourly rate on employees that they have is gonna be an estimate on time.
I'm just gonna get and figure out what it's gonna, what if they think it's gonna cost from labor and what materials and we'll just probably have to get it sectioned, like, you know, if we get it all out, I'll have somebody that'll come in and put the blow in insulation or whatever they do, have it separated out as you go.
Do the, get the wiring in and.
If you're gonna, if we're gonna think about doing the windows, that's gonna cost a boatload.
I was gonna say, how, where do you stop? You know, you get gutted out and all the sheetings rotted on the outside and the windows is rotten, where do, where do you decide to quit?
We're gonna start, keep going, budget every year, hopefully. It's gonna be some.
We'll eventually get it done.
Windows are not that old, are they?
Yeah, they're, they're double painted. There's a couple of them broke, but I think that part from outside in be all right. I just think we need to do the inside. We'll tear it open, we'll see.
Yeah.
Let's see if you guys can sit down and kind of figure out phases or how you want it to bid. And let's get something up on city letterhead so it's official.
Well, you'll know once you get the interior tore out of it. Well, you'll know once you get the interior tore out of it, what everything else looks like.
Our guys could, we could tear that out, can't we, Roger?
Yes, sir.
That'd save us a boatload of money.
Is a foam insulation better than fiberglass?
Spray foam, yeah.
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 That would keep, done that cock, seal it up from bugs and all that good stuff.
Yeah.
You don't have much you can go without.
I've watched a lot of home remodels.
That except we'll have a blow in on it though, you can't.
I've never done that. Kind of like I stated, a holiday in express.
All right.
All right, well, if you guys could work on that, then that would be awesome.
You're starting one?
Yeah. All right. We need to vote to close a part of the meeting pursuant to six one zero dot O two one subsection one legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving a public governmental body and any confidential or privileged communication between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys and section six one zero point zero two one subsection three hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting a particular employee's by a public governmental body when personal information about the employee is discussed. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I'll motion.
Donnie?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Rick?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes.
Delmer?
Yes.
All right, we are in closed session.
Okay, I'm gonna go out and wait for you to come back in to open, since you guys are discussing the budget. Can somebody, I'll park right in front of this door if somebody can.
Okay, yes, I'll let you know.
Okay, um, I'm gonna keep this kind of brief because I think we're all familiar with the budget. And I'm gonna go over changes. And then other than that, if you have questions, you are welcome to ask me. So the biggest change is related to the revenues, which we talked about last time. And I mentioned that I would like to move twenty-five percent from the general fund to the special life fund, so we're not having to transfer money from there. So that change has been incorporated into the budget. The second one I would like to do is to move another twenty-five percent of the Amber and franchise tax to the, from the general to the, to fund our parks and recreation. So year after year after year, we've said, we're in trouble, you know, we don't have enough to maintain them. So if we just do.
Is this the Amber and franchise tax?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so, uh, and I've highlighted those in the budget, so when you see it, you know, you're gonna see that those have been highlighted. And then the, the third revenue change I would like to make is, um, the telecommunication franchise tax. And, um, that purpose is for, um, telecom to use our streets and our right of ways, and so I would like to see us put it in the street maintenance fund. And that's gonna allow all three of those funds to be funded like we need them to be. And I won't have to come back, or whoever's here won't have to come back and say, we don't have enough, we don't have enough, we don't have enough, so. So I think that will put all three of those funds where we need them to be. The other thing is the grants, which are on page one. Um, and it's about the middle of the page, it talks about we've gotten three grants for this year, we have a C V G demolition grant, three thousand four hundred seven, three hundred forty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars with a match of thirty-six dollars. And that match will be met with those who have to pay a portion for their demolition. Uh, and that's budgeted in the demolition fund, and so the demolition fund is, is gonna come in and it's gonna go out. We have a motash grant for sidewalks of a hundred and twelve, one ninety-eight with a city match of twenty-eight, oh fifty, oh fifty. Uh, and that's budgeted in the capital improvement fund. And then we have a solid waste management grant for the baler of eighteen thousand, four fifty-seven, ninety-six with a city match of six thousand, one fifty-two, sixty-five, and that's budgeted in our sanitation fund. Other than that, our revenues are just pretty much as expected. Salaries, as discussed last meeting, um, which we're gonna have the exception, I think he's, he left me a note that Mac at eighteen would be fine. So that, we'll have that one changed, but other than that, that's what we budgeted. And we have, um, budgeted for one full-time police officer. Lost the rest of my notes, but, um, the rest of that's pretty standard. Page four is the capital outlay that we have budgeted for this year. Most of this is things we had in budgets for prior years and we did not spend. So the police trap, police equipment, we had in there in case we can get a grant, I would be our matching. Um, the tech point in the city hall, which really needs to be done. We've added the sidewalk grant, but that's, you know, we have funding coming in for most of that. The rock on the dam was, was budgeted last time. The country club, we've had in the budget, we've increased it a little bit to forty-five thousand. And you know, we can adjust that if we need to, when you get bids and decide what direction you want to go on that. So the newer items then start at the skid steer, and this is a replacement, so that would, um, trading in the old one. The difference would be thirty-five, he said it's got, I think he said it's used all the mileage, how's, how's that done, you guys?
We got hours on it, if we get another thousand hours on it, our, our money that's, again, it's gonna drop way down, it's not gonna be worth very much.
Okay, well, this is a good year because most of this, the funding is already there from, from prior years, the money's still sitting there. So that's really the only big new item that we're adding in. Um, and all these other things are small things. The largest one down there being the roof on the old water plant building of nine thousand dollars. The water department, um, we've already approved the pump maintenance agreement. Basic meter supplies, and then, um, Mike felt like we'd budgeted thirty thousand a year before, our total's a hundred and fifty, he says we've got a lot going out, he'd like to go ahead and do fifty thousand this year. And get more of them replaced this year. Sewer department is a fifteen thousand. Then in the sanitation this year, we're just gonna add more dumpsters and also the baler, which is, is grant, so. Unless you have questions. That's pretty well it. Sounds good.
Did you wanna go over that first?
Okay, the increases?
Mm-hmm.
If I get behind it. It's basically a five percent increase, water, food, trash. Um, inflation adjustment, we have a raise for three years and. You know, it's, it's not a huge job, if if you want something I dreaded so much, we should be doing a cost of living increase every single year. And that may be something we just need to start. You know, cost of living has gone up this much, we just need to, to do that on an annual basis. So this is just kind of getting us caught up.
And it has been three years.
I'm sorry?
Three years since we had any rate increase.
Three years, I think it was February.
Yeah.
And which if we start this process now, it's gonna be March, probably before we actually, February, March, before we've been activated.
Well, February, yeah.
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 I rounded them to make it a little easier for Kathy and Bill.
What page are you looking at? Are you talking about the rate increase?
What'd you say?
What page are we looking at, I'm sorry? Oh.
Should've been the last page I did, yeah.
So do you have that?
Yeah.
I have it.
I didn't show it, all right. Okay, so. So there is a process we have to go through.
Okay.
And you have to have two public meetings.
Yeah, two public hearings so that people have the opportunity to weigh some opinion.
Okay, so will be January and February meetings?
We could if you just wanted to have meetings, which is probably simpler, but it depends on how soon you want to get it into effect. If you wanted to get it into effect, you'd have to have one sooner and then have it at the regular January meeting. Because we have to have ordinances also. I have a copy of the ordinance that we did three years ago, uh, which may be pertinent. So, yeah, the January meeting, oh, oh, will not be till, but twelfth. But that would also be the predicament of having a public hearing by the end of December sometime.
That would be tough.
And that's kind of tough, so. Maybe that won't happen.
I would say if we did the first one in January, and then depending on what you all want to do, if you want to do a quick one mid-January, a couple weeks later, or if you want to wait till February, just. It's, it's not like we are in crisis, it's just we
Right.
can't continue with the expenses rising without the increase.
And for the first public hearing, I don't think the board all has to be here, but obviously for the second one, they do have to, if, if they're passing the ordinance to put it into effect, so. Uh, but anyway, yeah, we'll work on that, I guess.
So essentially for one, like the first public hearing could be you and I here and?
Yeah, open to the public for anybody to come in and.
Do you wanna do one?
Yeah, in December and then have, yeah, I need time to, you know, get it in the Sentinel. Today's the, today's the eighth, and so it's probably too late to have it in the week of the seventeenth, which means it won't be till the week of Christmas.
Do you want to do like December twenty-nine?
Uh. So, yeah, like the twenty-ninth.
Cause I'm off.
Oh, okay.
Work. Let's wait for, cause I get two vacations. Let me make sure, I know there's two days I have to work with Cinder. Gotta work on the thirtieth. I could do the twenty-ninth if you want to.
Technically, we could do it sometime during the day.
That would be fine.
Uh, allow more people, I mean, for a different schedule of people.
Will you get the date and time figured out and let me know?
Okay, yes, and I'll get that to the Sentinel office, okay?
Yeah, I would say just double check on that, if the council has to be there, just to make absolutely sure, yeah, because.
First one?
Yeah, I don't remem, yeah, I'm not the as far as like if people come in and make comment and then the voting body's not there to hear them, that might be an issue, I'm not sure.
And we usually have two public hearings, but I know.
A lot of people that nobody ever uses.
Have one, uh. So, yeah, I'll check on that.
So just asking, if you did the first one with your January meeting and you did your second with your February meeting, would it be started immediately then?
Uh, that's the way we've done before is.
So it could go out with the February billing?
Immediately, yeah, with that, with that particular billing.
Okay. So, so that's an option.
We want to wait and do it with, during the meetings, January, February?
Oh, January, February.
Cause I guess if nobody, we decide to vote on it in the February meeting, we can still, and we wouldn't be any farther ahead if we had one in December and one in January, we still gotta wait until February to vote.
Yeah.
So, maybe just hold it to.
Yeah, we could do it at the January meeting and the February meeting for the public hearing soon. Okay.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to approve the twenty twenty-six budget?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
And Rick?
Is there any more discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Budget is passed. Okay, I need a motion to advertise in the, in the post and the M M L for a full-time police officer.
And the Sentinel, of course.
And the Sentinel.
No, motion.
Second.
And so are we advertising for a chief of police?
Is that what you, we advertise for chief of police, yes?
Yes.
With duties for a fourth class city.
Yes. Everybody understand that one?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So you made the motion.
It was Rick and David.
Okay, Rick and David, to advertise for a chief of police. What are the duties for a fourth class city?
Uh, I think she has the written out, we can get you a copy.
Thank you.
Duties for a fourth class police officer.
Oh, first, first part of that, the rest of this kind of criteria for hiring.
I need a motion to.
Yeah, that's like, no, that's hardly, pulled out that part. I'll make a motion to contact the county and negotiate the E nine one one contract.
Okay, so it's second?
I'll second it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So now.
And Vic, and Rick.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion adjourn.
Donnie, all in favor?
David and Donnie.
Aye.
All right, you guys go, you have made love to me every time.
No!